Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Dearborn Heights City Council Meeting, November 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell. Ray Muscat.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Winslow.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much. A pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to 2A, Mayor Baydoun Employee Ignition. I guess it's Mayor Baydoun and Director Farhat from the Ordnance Department.
Hello, councilmembers. How are you guys doing?
Hey, Mayor.
George, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. It's my honor to take a moment to recognize an individual whose dedication, professionalism, and heart have made a remarkable impact on the city of Dearborn Heights for more than 11 and 1/2 years. Tonight, we acknowledge Administrative Assistant Michelle Bianchi, someone whose commitment to serve in this community goes far beyond the expectation of her position. Michelle has been a steady and trusted presence within the Ordnance Department, consistently demonstrating exceptional organizational skills, deep knowledge of department operations, and unwavering dedication to delivering quality service to our residents. What makes Michelle truly stand out is not the excellence with which she handles her primary responsibilities, but the fact that she's always willing and capable, capably taking on dual roles. In addition to her work in the Ordnance Department, Michelle has played a major part of supporting the Animal Control Division. Her ability to manage both areas, each with very different needs and challenges, is a testament to her professionalism. Sorry. And adaptability and strong ethics. Michelle is the kind of employee every city hopes to have, someone who shows up every day with a purpose, someone who goes well and beyond without being asked, and someone who really cares about the community she serves. She has provided stability during transitions, support during difficult situations, and clarity in moments when it is needed the most. Her dedication has not only kept our operation running smoothly, but has allowed us to build trust within the departments as well as with residents. Michelle's work reflects a very best of public service, and after 11 and 1/2 years, her contributions continue to shape the quality efficiency of our city's daily operations. Michelle, on behalf of the mayor, the city council, your colleagues, and the entire Dearborn Heights community, we thank you. Thank you for your professionalism. Thank you for your dedication, and thank you for the care and pride you bring to your work every single day. It's a privilege to recognize you this evening. We are grateful for everything you do for the city of Dearborn Heights. Thank you so much. So quickly, I'll tell you now that it's been like 24 hours since I've been the mayor. And so we've surpassed the 20-minute mark. And within our first 24 hours, I can tell you that I've been able to go over to the Ordnance Department, and I got to hang out with all the staff, and I hung out with Michelle as well. And as I was having a conversation with the staff, Michelle had these candy that was sitting on her desk. And so, you know, knowing that who I am, I'm this guy that just likes to just kind of take things off somebody's desk and kind of eat it. But I only ate it because there were so many pieces of candy. So I figured, okay, what's one piece of bubble gum? But in my head, I was thinking to myself, there are so much pieces of bubble gum here, and nobody's eating them, right? This has to be new. So I unwrap it, I put it in my mouth, and I'm talking, and this gum was probably from like 1999. And I think that's about the same time that Michelle started here, or maybe longer. I don't know. But it had to have been from Michelle's first day at work. We were in 2020, almost 2026, and Michelle still has that same box of candy sitting on her desk. And so, just to give a little bit of appreciation, aside from offering her some type of like proclamation, which, you know, it says Michelle's name, we're so excited, we love Michelle, this is so nice. On top of that, I said, how nice of a gesture would it be that if we brought Michelle some Godava chocolate, and so that she can have new candy on her desk, and hopefully, when I'm eating from it, Michelle won't be like slapping my finger this time because... But on top of that, you know, graciously, he wanted me to take all the credit for this. I can't be the one to take for it. But Director Farhat here actually also put on here a $250 Delta gift card to be able to send you and your husband on a vacation, so you guys can enjoy the holiday. It's just a little bit of appreciation for all the hard work that you do that goes unnoticed at times. But the reality is, I've said this in our meeting, when the ordinance officer shows up to your home, yes, Councilman Ahmad, this is a lot better than the stuffy that you offer. Your proclamations are cute and all, but they're not no $250 Godava chocolates or anything like that. So calm down a little.
I offer more love, though.
Well, I want you to know that Michelle is somebody that has to hear every time a resident shows up to the home or shows up to the city and says, "Well, I have an issue. Why did they give me a ticket? This ain't right. I don't deserve this ticket." Michelle has to get that information, one from that officer, has to be prepared, has to express and try not to mirror that type of behavior that's coming to the window, and that's hard. It's not easy. And I could tell you, the same smile she has on her face today is the same respectful smile that she gives to every resident that approaches our city and at our windows at the police department. And so, Michelle, we'd love for you to come take this and accept this appreciation. Hopefully, we're going to have continued candy to go, and we could throw away the ones on the desk. And if you want to keep them as a souvenir, I get it. No big deal.
Thank you very much.
No, please, thank Director Farhat.
Well deserved, Michelle.
It's not as nice as the proclamations that Councilman Ahmad gives, but we're getting there.
Thank you.
I guess so. It must be the C.
This guy's so ugly. Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to put this back in here, wherever you want to travel to today.
All right. Thank you so much.
And we're going to hold the candy. We got to hold the candy. The candy is part of the story.
And the gift card.
He's going to try to slide away with it.
I'll be able to spell you this one. Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Yes, yes. I mean, she works with us. That's the least we can do, right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Director Farhat, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, if you want to say a few words, you're more than welcome to even talk about whatever you'd like.
Okay. Thank you. This is a very nice surprise. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say that over my 11 and 1/2 years, I've had opportunities to go to other departments when positions open up. But I've chosen to stay with Ordnance and Animal Control because we're a great team, we work well together, everyone steps up to help each other, no matter what's going on or what's needed. So it's a great team, and I don't want to lose that team. And we really appreciate everything, and thank you so much. And I'm sorry, the mayor hurt his teeth on the gum.
Well, congratulations, Michelle. And thank you for all the years of service you gave to the city of Dearborn Heights. We do really appreciate you. I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank Director Farhat for this amazing initiative. I do want to encourage every director in the city, probably to do the same, I mean, minus the $250 gift card, but I'm just kidding. But I mean, this is, I think it's a great initiative. Every director should showcase their employees and their great work, and I would encourage them maybe to bring up to the council meeting. Now, every single time, and maybe if they are the Employee of the Month three times in a row, I would love to have them at the council, and we can acknowledge them as well. That being said...
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I'd like to congratulate her also, and the great job you're doing there, and everybody in the department. And don't worry, the mayor has dental insurance now.
I want to just, Council Chair. Mayor? Quick update. Until I'm here for 90 days, I actually don't have dental insurance. I still don't have access to dental insurance, but I will tell you, my teeth hurt, I swear.
Well, you're still young, Mayor, and you probably can't wait 90 days. But let's move on to Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I can put two out of my insurances, my son, you're young enough.
Council Chair.
Councilman, please go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that Dearborn Heights City Council approved amended agenda for the regular meeting of November 25th, 25. That's submitted.
A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I submitted a resolution, and it was referred back to me, not put on the agenda, about revamping the tree ordinance that we have. It's got a lot of defects in it, and needs to be tweaked a lot. There's a lot of trees getting cut down, and I want to put this resolution back on the agenda, if that was possible.
Councilman, like I said, I discussed with you. I'm taking it to a study session. I already reached out to the DPW Director and Madam Clerk, and most likely, we're going to have it next meeting before the meeting, as a study session. Like I said, the meeting is not placed to discuss all this stuff. We're taking it to a study session for the sake of everybody's time. Because, I mean, yeah, you sent me a resolution, I'm not going to keep going back and forth, but we're going to take it to a study session, we're going to study it, we'll see exactly what we're going to do, and then we can have a resolution after that, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I didn't want to discuss it all. In the resolution, it says immediate moratorium on any new permits given out, just to stop it. When someone's hurting or bleeding, you stop the bleeding first, then you assess the situation. So I'd like to keep this on here and stop, like in my motion, it says to stop any current permits that have not been acted on yet, or any future permits on trees of city property.
If you don't mind, it's only two weeks from now. We're going to take it to a study session, and we'll see exactly how we're going to move forward with it before putting any stop on anything. So if you don't mind, let's just keep it to the study session, and then we can take it from there.
When's the study session?
Next meeting.
Next Tuesday?
Next, no. The 9th.
Oh, that's...
Two weeks, just before the meeting.
I want to voice my opinion that I agree with Councilman Tom Winslow. The history ordinance needed tweaking from the day it was put on. So I just want to support him on this.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Well, we originally netted a PIG and recommended an ordinance, and amongst other things, a homeowner could not cut down trees. And we, when Dave Abdullah was chair, we amended it. Glad to look at further amendments, but it's going to be something that's going to require some discussion.
Exactly. That's why, please, everybody, bring your ideas, bring your solutions, and let's bring it to the study session on the 9th. Mayor? Please, no, no.
You giving it up already?
Mayor, go ahead.
My only thought to that is, I understand, nobody wants to see trees get taken down. I don't personally want to see trees taken down. But I think what needs to be happened is, maybe we can relook at this contract where we say, or this resolution or ordinance, and say, if you do take down a tree, you have to plant a tree back where that tree was removed if it's on the city property, right? Because we are seeing a lot of that taken down, but you have to be careful because there are a ton of sycamore trees. And people are sitting, and these sycamore trees get animal sick. These sycamore trees are affecting homeowners. So like, we might be able to come out here and say, well, we don't want it, we don't like it. People have expressed it. Have we done a survey? Have we put out a citywide survey that asks people, what do you want to do about your trees? Or are we just going to take an opinion of a couple of people? So, I mean, look, I agree. I don't want to see nice, beautiful maple trees and beautiful trees that really shape our community be taken down because really, trees are a way of giving back to our health. But I also don't think that if there's a dead tree, you know, hey, and a homeowner doesn't want a sycamore tree in front of their home, we're saying no to that.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
We have to be careful, guys. It's a very, it's hard, very hard.
That's what I'm saying. That's why I'm taking it to a study session. DPW Director is already on it, and he's trying to work up a solution or, you know, something to revamp the ordinance.
I just want to say just one quick thing, so everybody knows how serious this is. In our current ordinance, it states that you have to replace a tree when you cut one down. And there hasn't been one tree replaced in over a year of all the trees that have been cut down.
I mean, I don't know how factual that is, unless you can like give me 100% fact. But I want to be able to say that I have told DPW that if you do take down a tree, because it's a sick, dead tree, we have to plant a different tree.
100%, Mayor.
Maybe the ordinance says that, you know, if a resident wants it all, okay, I'll stop.
Mayor, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I'm just starting to discuss. That's exactly why I want to take it to a study session. He's already working on it, he's going to give me a report, and we're going to discuss it at the study session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion for Agenda Approval. Whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you very much. Oops. Moving on to four approval of minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Yeah. I moved it as Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes of the regular meeting of November 13th, 2025, as outlined in 4A.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to five, public hearing and public comment. You have two minutes. There's not going to be a debate. After you finish with all your questions, please sit down, and we're going to try to answer the questions. Please state your name, street, and the city you live in.
Good evening. Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. First off, it looks amazing here. And what a huge difference change in atmosphere. People are friendly, they're smiling, they're shaking hands, so it's wonderful. I was looking at the backups for claims. There's still quite a few that are lacking some attachments and some signatures. One in particular was regarding the survey, and I wanted to know, there was no backup with it, what the results of the survey were, and if we could find out, since so much discussion was done during meetings. That was it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have the survey, and I guess it was sent now to the Building Department to compare it to the other surveys. And I guess maybe Mayor, you want to add something to it, or?
So I had this conversation, I will be brief. I got a phone call from Chemtech, we had the conversation back and forth. The fence on, almost 80% sits on the one home, Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell's property. The back corner encroaches on the left side to the resident's property. It's a fix that I believe the Councilwoman and I had a conversation with. It's a fix that's going to be done when the weather breaks. But it does back up into some of her property, on Mrs. Berry's property. And for the most part, I want to say 80% of it does sit on the fence line. It's put there. But when you get by the utility light pole and the plumbing, or sorry, the sewer, is where it actually encroaches on that property. But I've had that conversation with the Councilwoman. Her and I have talked, and she plans on working with Mr. Watlin to get this resolved and be able to put this behind us.
Council Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman?
Yeah, I just received that today, and I've been kept abreast of this all along through the whole process. And I just want the residents to know what they're paying for. I mean, this has ended up costing the city and the taxpayers, really, not the taxpayers, a lot of money. And I want to make sure the date, they have the information of what it has cost, and to be able to see the survey themselves. That's all, I put it on the record. That's it.
No, no, definitely. I think maybe, Madam Clerk, if we can add the survey to the backup, probably you'll have it. I'll send it to you, so we can have it to the backup. Councilman, so like I said over the phone, we did, the council approved this when, actually, the mayor was still council chair. And because every party had different surveys, so the city didn't know how to act. So that's why we took it upon ours to order our own survey, to see exactly what's going on.
I am not challenging that at all. I just, for transparency reasons, and we're always talking transparency, we've got to let the residents know what they're paying for. Okay? I mean, we, this came out Chemtech and had a survey, but they don't know...
No, no, you're 100%?
So I just want them to know, that's all.
Please, Madam Clerk, we'll have it to you, and you'll make sure.
It's uploaded.
Please, go ahead.
Angelina Nagus, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights. I just want to go after Sue. This looks beautiful when you walk up to City Hall, it's absolutely gorgeous. And I want to put some thanks out there to department heads. Mr. Farhat, I want to thank you for always taking care of me and listening to concerns that I have. You've done a terrific job. Michelle, congratulations on your award there, you deserve it. And I've been having issues with the house next door to me, several different kinds of things. And finally, the front yard's gotten cleaned up, and it's been a couple months, and supposedly, it was going to court. But I really think that Kevin's presence in the neighborhood and getting, being out there and talking to people, it's helped me remedy the situation. So I just wanted to put it out there and give Kevin thanks. And I want to thank our DPW Department. There were numerous target baskets littered throughout the neighborhood, and they've been picked up and hauled away. And our police chief, kudos to them. They've been out in the neighborhoods, ticketing people for running stop signs, speeding, whatever, down Ford Road. You guys are all doing a terrific job. This is a week of giving thanks, so instead of being up here complaining, I'm going to thank everybody who's been doing a wonderful job. Thank you, guys, and happy Thanksgiving.
Mayor Baydoun, sir, please state your name, street.
Mohammed Jani, Northside Angeline, Dearborn Heights. Congratulations to everybody. I'm going to say whatever you want, it's the same. It's a pleasure to see the upbeat City Hall, and people are just more relaxed and more willing to do their job in a much more respectful way and not in a negative way. Congratulations to all. I'm up here for, I can't count how many times, anybody got an update with me about this crosswalk? I mean, come on, guys. New regime, old regime. I keep getting told November. Last time I think I was up here, it was told November. We're in the end of November, it's Thanksgiving this week. What's going on? I really want to know. You know, transparency, like Councilman Ray Muscat says, is key to everybody knowing what's happening in the city. And as you know, I've been coming up here at least once a month, speaking.
Five years.
More than that, actually.
It's not more.
10, 10-plus years I've been coming up. And I still haven't, you know, it's getting done, it's getting done, it's getting done. I don't see anything getting done. I drive down Beach daily often. My house is around the corner. I pick up my daughter. I don't see anything happening. So please, address this for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jani. And as the mayor mentioned early today, he's only been the mayor for 24 hours. We just got to give him more time. I know there's a lot of changes, he's still going through his transformation team. So if we can just give him a little bit more time. No, I mean, just to go through the issues that was left behind. So that's all. I don't know, Mayor, would you like to add something, or?
You'll get an email or a call from us tomorrow.
Thank you very much, sir. Please go ahead, state your name.
That was first, Zuhair Abdalha, Rosemary. First, the entrance to the city looks absolutely beautiful. Thank you. That is great.
Can I stop him? One time.
Go ahead.
Pause this time.
Go ahead, you can start.
It's, I cannot be the one to take the credit for this. This is wholeheartedly on the DPW Department. They did the work, they've been out there countless amount of hours and days. I may have just said, I want it to look pretty. Councilman Saab paid for a lot of the lights. This is our ordinance, I'm sorry, our Parks and Recreation Director also, Martin Zaboznik, purchased a lot of these things in the past, got creative also with some of the trees and the Big Gorilla. We're still waiting on a Christmas tree, but that's all coming together.
I have a miniature tree. Thank you, Mayor.
Not me, the DPW.
I hope, Mayor, you will pay for the Christmas baskets. Anyway, I like the resolution you have with the chair about the compensations severance package, which was given to some people, some appointees. There was, I don't know if you know, there was two contracts, old contract for the three people who were hired to the police. Then they were changed after a year, and the severance package was increased without your knowledge, without your approval. And you found out apparently through the positions about them. I found out through FOIA, and I had to go to court, basically, to get the documents. The city paid 72,000 dollars to Chief Hart. The ones I have until July was 72. That's what they gave me, even at the order of the judge. And I believe they didn't give me everything, but that's what I have. I want the city to see if we can recover this money, and if we can prosecute the person who allowed and gave permission to pay that money. That is taxpayer money, was paid illegally, and we should go through the legal routes, if possible, to recover that money. Because he was not entitled to it. After he resigned, he was entitled, according to his contract, to one-year severance, which was before, I believe, 90 days only. So please, see if there is any legal action you can take. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more in person? I see none. Madam Clerk, and we move to Zoom.
Ready?
Please state your name, street, city, you live in.
Hassan An, Hassan An, Dearborn.
Good evening.
Good morning, good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
I just wanted to congratulate Mayor Baydoun for becoming the mayor. You know, he'll do a great job. Like I said, you got to give him time. He just became mayor, nothing happens overnight. So I just wanted to tell everybody, just be patient. And Ray Muscat, he's back. He's, he's got action. That, we need to see that, because Ray Muscat is a person that loves transparency. And I just wanted to ask the council one thing, I want to ask you. Regarding police safety, you guys indicate that people that call 911, they say that we don't have police to go to a house. If you guys are shorthanded for police, I already advised, sent the email to intervene Wayne County if the city cannot afford extra police officers. So the city will be safe, and all the neighbors will be safe, and nobody will complain. Because you're going to get people to complain if you got a lot of police activity and there's not a lot of police officers. That's one thing I asked at the city council, to do a resolution, to approve Wayne County to intervene if there isn't police officers and you guys can't afford to hire any police officers.
Also, sir?
Are you guys going to do a resolution, or something's coming up, or?
No, no, the way I do it, when you finish, then we can talk about it. We're not going on a debate. Are you done? Thank you very much, Mr. An. I think we're, I think Police Department is doing fine. I think we're almost full capacity with the employees. We do thank you for your advice. Can we move on, Madam Clerk?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Hicks Clayton, speaking as a treasurer. And I live on Gully in Dearborn Heights. But I want to speak on 11D, just to share, just to make sure we have all the facts But I want to speak on 11D, just to share, just to make sure we have all the facts regarding this proposed resolution, seeking your support to adopt or to receive, don't file, whatever your preference is. This is for a proposed Bill, House Bill 5225. This is an existing deferment program by Michigan Department of Treasury, which is Form 471. It's been around for, actually, two or more decades. Probably Councilman Coniston can actually give us an exact date, I imagine. He's very good with that. But at any rate, this is an amendment to amend the cap on the income limits from 40,000 to 3,000. Has not been done in over 25 years. This is a deferment, so it does not impact our tax base. It's non-exemption. It doesn't lose any tax revenue for the city. Simply the deferment process, which is extended to senior citizens in the age of 62. They must be PRA's, disabled, paraplegic, paraplegic or blind, and eligible servicemen or women, veterans. And again, all this information is on the Treasurer's page. This is a program, the Treasurer, that I administrate, Michigan Department of Treasury. So those applications are reviewed each year until September 15th. We actually did a big push on this here, if you recall. We had about 35 applicants that were approved. That's what we're talking about. On our tax base of 24,000 households, you're looking at 35 applicants. So there is not an impact, you're not losing the new folks. It's just something to keep up with the pace of economic conditions and extend fair and compassionate financial relief and show our commitment to serving our community.
Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer.
Oh. I didn't get a warning, thank you.
No, no.
I thought somebody warned me, but I only have a few minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman. I have a comment about this. To be honest with you, I don't even know why we're taking no and file of this. This is something for the state and if it's been just renewed, why are we filing to support it if it's already been going up for renewal for two decades? This beats, to be honest with you, this beats...
Man, that question, not for renewal.
I'm not done yet.
It's an existing bill. Sorry.
Councilman, do you mind just to keep it on?
No, no, I'm finishing my comment. It's just that the bill, it's just, this should not be put on the council meetings. This is not official city business. This should be emailed, it should not be...
Like I said, we can maybe just comment on it when it comes to the agenda item. Do you have any more on Zoom?
Yes, one more.
Please state your name, street and city you live in. You have two minutes.
Lisa Hagopian, Beach Cross, Dearborn Heights. I just want to say that I'm wholeheartedly in favor of a change to the tree ordinance. Too many people are cutting down healthy trees that are not a hindrance at all. In recent memory, I can think of 10 to 15 trees just on my one block that have been cut down and none of them have been replaced. Even when the city cuts down, let's say a dead tree, the city doesn't even replace that tree on the easement. So I'd like to see more penalties for cutting down healthy trees. Also, I, I would be great if the city actually planted more trees in the residential lots. And there needs to be an effort to educate the residents, because too many people nowadays, for some reason, think of trees as a hindrance rather than looking at all the multitude of benefits that they offer.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you very much for your comment. Any more? Madam Clerk, do you see anybody?
No, no one's answering.
Council Chair, I wanted to wait for everybody to get down. I just wanted to do a quick thank you. This past week, through the Neighbor Labor and Community Unity Programs, leaf raking sector, we helped 17 homes and bagged over 500 bags of leaves. And we had a lot of volunteers, including our Dearborn Heights professional firefighters, local 1355, Rashida Talib, Aaron Burns, Andrea Robinson from Senator Santana's office, Chief Haidar, Chief Jose from the Explorers Program in the Explorers. And of course, always a hard-working Crestwood High School National Arts Society. Thanks to all these people who made a big difference in our community this past week.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, nobody anymore, correct? So we're moving on to funds transfer and current claims. Do I have a motion?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims and ACH wire transfers 6-1 through 640 as submitted.
A motion by Councilman Coniston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Saab. I need discussion.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I have one on claim number two to Amazon. We go back to the, always, for some reason, I don't understand, we go right back to transparency. All I have is a large list of a bunch of numbers. Just numbers. I don't know what's been bought. Somebody could have bought a steak dinner, they, whatever. I'm not saying that it did happen, but just a bunch of numbers here. I, I, how can we approve anything without not knowing what was purchased? I, I mean, we have all of these, I mean, it, the number of them all, it's 11,262, but I don't know what was, what was purchased. We need to know what's purchased before you can say yes to this. Now, I don't want to hold up an entire, the whole transfer funds over one, one item, but I, I don't know what to do. Personally, I don't want to vote yes on this because of that.
Councilman, we can take it off? Take this one off? We can amend it?
Council Chair.
Because you're right, I mean, every meeting, they used to have everything in the backup, but...
Correct.
He forgot, he forgot to put this...
Okay, so... Council Chair. I'm not gonna be here very long, but I've lived this for a long time and I've always complained about the same thing. I can't approve something without knowing what was purchased. Council Chair.
Mayor.
I can tell you that I've had a conversation with our Comptroller and everybody here moving forward. A lot of these things are from the past as well, so it's still things that have been paid off that we haven't really put forward. A lot of it, I believe, is like DPW's buying like canisters, things for like the automobile, water main breaks, so like, I get it. I'm not saying it's, it's an affordable excuse, but I was so angry because I said every, this is something that I called for. And he said, you know, there's, these are some things that were in the past that we still haven't taken pictures or showed results to. So I can tell you, moving forward, we've had this conversation. Nothing, not even cutting grass, not even raking leaves, nothing, without showing proof to the, to the council, because I was once on the legislative side and wanted that proof. So I, I hear you, we're still, but this is things that have been held on for so long before we paid it. And so now we have to like, clear up, I guess, their credit card.
Council Chair, can I direct a comment to the mayor?
Sure.
So have you reviewed any of this?
Yes.
And if you have reviewed it?
Yes.
I'm good with going forward, as long as you know what all of this was...
And I tell you, I was, it was very tedious and I'm hand-signing these things for him. I'm not putting like...
Okay, I just want, for the future, I'm hoping that this doesn't happen again.
100%.
And I'm sure our Comptroller will, will do a better job at that.
There was no M&amp;Ms this time, I promise.
Okay. How about a, oh, Henry bar?
No, no, no candy.
Mr. Bydoun, can you please share with everybody all the backup and make sure Madam Clerk has uploaded? She uploads it to the backup and I have a comment too. Please, again, every director, make sure you write your name when you sign, because some of them, they still, you can even, you can even read the name.
Print.
Yeah, to print your name, then sign. For every director to know exactly who to call for every invoice. Any more discussion from anyone? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to eight, reports from mayor, local officers' compensation commission appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayor's appointment of Mr. Mike Mackey to the local officers' compensation commission term to expire November 2031. This appointment is to fill the vacancy left by Mr. Dennis Kosky as outlined in 8A.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Chief of Staff, for sending the resume for Mr. Mackey, but I know Mr. Mackey is known to, I guess, everybody here is a long-term resident of Dearborn Heights, business owner and advocate for the city. I think he would be, he is, will be a great addition to the commission, so I do thank you for that.
Nobody better.
100%. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on to 8B, new position, grant writer.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the addition of a grant writer position with a salary not to exceed $100,000. The salary for this year will be covered by the vacant Deputy Comptroller position and this reallocation will not affect the general fund balance for the fiscal year as outlined D.
Support.
A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
Don't we have to vacate that office first before we can put it somewhere else?
Let's, you know?
I got it.
Mayor?
So, the, thank you, Councilwoman, and I want to make clear, this position has not been filled, nor have we been out asking for a position, but I know that we have a limited funds on what we can and can't do. I'm not here to put any stress on this, on our, one, on our fund balance, two, on our general fund. And so we were able to allocate this money to a position that's gonna help bring in more money. Hopefully, we're gonna find bigger surpluses and be able to open different opportunities.
Mayor, I think her question is because she's thinking Mr. Bydoun is the Deputy Comptroller, but he's the interim comptroller right now, so the deputy position is vacant, so. I think we're good.
Yeah, hold on, just, just want to say, it's temporarily removing the funds from the Deputy Comptroller to the grant writer. For some reason, I'm not selected as a comptroller and I'm brought back as a deputy, we can make another amendment from other areas of the general fund. So right now, as it stands, I, that position is vacant and we're only temporarily doing it until the end of the fiscal year. So the next fiscal year, you'll still be budgeted for Deputy Comptroller if the mayor decides that's a position, position he needs.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much. Any more discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
A couple of things. Don't we have to amend the budget to show where the money's going? Instead of, you know, just saying it's coming, you know, don't we have to redo and say that, eliminate the...
I don't think so, since it's coming from the comptroller's office, so there's nothing that matters.
Yeah, but it's not, we're not paying the Deputy Comptroller anymore.
There is no Deputy.
It's transparency, we should eliminate, strike that out of the budget completely then. That, that term. That position. You're not eliminating it.
Yeah, we're not eliminating the position.
Councilwoman Wenzel is correct. If somebody can amend the motion to say, to amend comptroller's budget by the amount for the grant writer for the remaining portion and allocate it to the new Grants Department, which is actually at the end of this meeting, so you'd have to approve that Grant Department before we can make that amendment.
No, no, but, I mean, we've only approved it now, so once you hire somebody, we can come back to us and we can amend it.
We can do it that way.
You don't need to do that.
I wanted to come back to us.
Okay, we'll do it that way, once we actually get the grant writer and the amount.
Correct.
Thank you.
Exactly, because it says up to 100, we need to know exactly how much.
Yeah.
That's why I don't want to amend it now, but when I amend it, when we have somebody and we have a contract and we have a salary.
Okay, that was my next point, it wasn't clear in the amount. Also, I don't know, make me, address the mayor, ask him. We had a situation where he was gonna use that money from that position for the Water Department.
Director.
Yeah, the Water Department...
Right, never said that.
Yeah, at the last meeting.
No, the supervisor of the Water Department is coming from the Water Department.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said it's from the...
No, he's coming from the Water Department.
Coming from the Water Department?
The Water employee, Water billing.
I just saw the, the budget from the Water Department?
Correct.
$1,000 or whatever?
Correct.
I want to, if I may also...
Mayor?
Council Chair.
It's Thanksgiving, it's okay.
Better you than me, that's all I gotta say.
This grant writer will also be assessing ways to be able to help money towards our infrastructure. And so if they're able to find ways to bring in, you know, grant money for our infrastructure, which is to help out our water, we're gonna also potentially find ways to be able to separate that, so you can also pay, the Water Department also pay towards this department to give, give off some on, on the general fund.
I mean, Mayor, by all means, this is something that we need. Whatever it takes, we need. I said that four years ago and we need this guy, we need this person.
That could tell you.
Yeah, we need it. This is something like really essential to be done in the city. So this is a great stuff and I do, I'm all for it for it.
And I want to make clear, like, this isn't, this was not just something that we campaigned on and said we were gonna do. This is what every single person up here said they wanted. And so I'm bringing it forward to you guys, I'm being as transparent as possible. I have not brought one position or one thing and said, I'm gonna hide it from this council. I hope that we can continue to work like this. I love the back and forth and the questions. I appreciate Councilman Wenzel even bringing that up, because in my mind, I said, we have to amend, amend the budget, not only because it's the right thing to do, but because this body also passed a resolution that said, you can't take money from one line and put it here without coming through. Gary, I think, helped us right there when he was our special legal counsel, now he's our city's attorney, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for that, but again, like I said, I want to amend, amend the exact amount, I don't want to just amend the, the general amount. So I guess this is a good thing and hopefully we can find somebody that can bring us a lot of money. Any more discussion? I see none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on to reports from city officials, Police Chief Haidar, Celebrite Renewal.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the renewal of the Celebrite Service Contract between the city and Celebrite Inc. for a total cost of $10,285 and authorized the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which expires November 17, 2026. In addition, authorized the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from the forfeiture account 265330831265, of which the current balance is $191,124, outlined in 9A.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. So basically, this Celebrite contract is a software that allows the police department to go and cell phones and download all the information. I did reach out to the captain, Guzzi.
Good enough.
Thank you, sir, and, but they call him Guzzi, so I thought, and I do thank you for all the information. So there's, we do have two options here. Either we can just renew the contract for $10,285 just to go in cell phones, or we can give them the option to unlock cell phones with no password. So he gave me both options, that would be for like $15,000. So we do have both in the backup, but the thing is, he told me that for the extra $5,000, they'll give you 15 unlocks.
Correct.
I did reach out to him and he gave me a report that they only, where, they only unlocked about 13 phones in the past two years. So it's up to you guys. I think we'll be now spending more money than we don't need to spend, especially with the forfeiture funds, our balance is going down, but, you know, I'll let the chief say something before we can...
So one of the biggest things about that second portion you mentioned is, Dearborn Police and State Police are no longer unlocking phones for us.
They're not?
No.
I thought that just 91 stopped.
No, we used to take our phones to State Police in Dearborn and they're backed up and...
So even State is not...
I mean, it takes a month or two to even get it back from them.
So the turnaround time for the State Police is about three to four months right now, when we, when we give them a phone, so. Because they're, you know, not only they have their own statewide cases that they do, they're also doing cases for smaller agencies or agencies like us that don't have the unlocks. So types of cases we would use that for, sexual assault crimes, any type of terrorism crime or school threat crime, obviously homicides and things of that nature. If we had them, we would use them, for sure, but...
So, Captain, you think that's something that you guys really need?
Absolutely, yeah.
Councilman?
Council Chair, there's no price you can put on public safety. I say we go on $15,000, just carry it over with and not depend on other cities.
I agree with Councilman Saab. I know it's a very important investigative tool and this money's coming out of the forfeiture account, correct?
Correct, it's coming out of forfeiture account. Myself and Marty have talked in the last couple of days. We have no plans on signing any contract for the next couple of years and using any funds out of the forfeiture account until we're able to assign a task force officer to try to bring up that account.
Also, Councilman? Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yes, Council Chair, my question is, is what, how long does it take you to unlock the phone if you have access? It's probably less than three months, right?
Oh, yeah.
An active investigation, that time is...
Yes, it's crucial. Yes, yes.
Actually, that's a good question. How long does it take you to unlock it with the software?
So, like, the technicalities of that are, if it's an Android phone, sometimes it can take longer than an iPhone. And the technology kind of bounces back and forth, where the cellphone companies will update their security and software, so Celebrite will be a little bit behind.
Not on average, it's.
Right, and then Celebrate will figure it out, and then they can do it immediately. It's almost immediate. So it's always like a cat and mouse game, right? They're always catching up to each other.
So we're talking a few minutes, a few hours?
A few hours, to like, between a few hours to a couple of days, usually, so.
It's also going to depend, it's going to depend on the device also. The device plays a big factor. iPhones are a lot harder to unlock than Androids.
Uh, I just want to say, Entrant Controller has had to be really cautious with the forfeiture funds because they're being depleted. But we have a motion on the table, either we go with the ten thousand two hundred eighty-five, or if you want to amend your motion, to go with the fifteen, five thirty-five. Are you guys going, okay, we're going with the fifteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to amend.
Okay, Councilman Saab, can you amend your motion?
I made my motion to go with fifteen thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars. To amend this motion to include unlocking of the cell phones with this contract.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, and.
I agree.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Second, excellent. Madam Craig, did you note? Thank you very much. Any more discussion? I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Captain, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. You guys do a great job.
Uh, no, thank you, Captain. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to ordinance and resolution, Corporation Council Miyaki, first and second reading of proposed ordinance, H twenty-five ten, amending city code section pertaining to the duties of the local officers' compensation commission.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council moved that proposed ordinance number H dash two twenty, two five dash ten, an ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights, providing that chapter two of the Code of Ordinance, city of Dearborn Heights, be amended by amending section two dash five twenty-five, pertaining to, pertaining to the duties of the local officers' compensation commission. Be considered read for the first and second time on an emergency basis, and become effective upon publication as provided by laws outlined in eleven A.
Second. A motion by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Constant. Again, this resolution basically would allow city council to either reject any or all that comes from a compensation commission, instead of like rejecting all or accepting all. Uh, so basically like picking and choosing what to accept or reject from the compensation commission. Thank you, Councilman, and any more discussion from council members?
Thank you, Attorney, Mr. Miyaki, for doing that. Appreciate it, sir.
Any more discussion?
No, good, thanks.
Very good. I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on to eleven B. Mayor Baydun, first reading of proposed ordinance H two five eleven, creating Department of Water Billing. Council Chair. Councilman Saab.
Move the Dearborn Heights City Council move that proposed ordinance number H twenty-five eleven, an ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights, providing that chapter two of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Dearborn Heights be amended by adding article eleven, section two, dash one two zero one regarding the Department of Water Billing be considered for, be considered read for the first and outlined in eleven B.
Second. A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Muscat. So basically, this ordinance, creating a water billing department by itself, instead of being governed by the DPW or Controller, now it's going to be its own department. We're going to have its own director that's going to go over the billings and the complaints. Any discussion from council members?
It's a great idea.
Councilman?
Thank you. Did we check with the union to see if they're okay with this? And as far as creating different positions, I mean, a director now, right, we're going to have?
Well, yeah, that's a director position, it's not a union position. All directors are not union, so.
I know, I know that. None, none of the directors are union. I'm, I'm just saying, is, is there, how many people are going to be in it? Are we hiring new people? Who's, is the director going to be appointed? Is that what it's going to be? Is that a new position?
Correct. That's why the proposed ordinance.
How, I mean, where's, where's, is that, that's coming from the water fund, I take it, then?
Correct.
Another, yeah.
That's the same one, the same position, the supervisor for the Water Department billing. So now, because it's a director position, now it's, it has to be its own department.
I mean, did anybody talk to the union, say if this can be done, you know, according to their agreements? As far as having, you know, people that are, that are all union and know our department now, creating?
From my knowledge, I don't think they need the union here, because it's, like I said, it's a director position, and it's just somebody they, instead of answering to the DPW director or the Controller, now they answer to their own supervisor.
Uh, Council Chair, if I may.
Mayor?
Uh, I just want to be very clear that we're doing this, we're being transparent. We're not coming in here, you're waking up one day, seeing on the American news, or seeing things on the press, on the pressing guide, saying Dearborn Heights just hired two new directors to the police department. I'm coming through the council, we're creating an ordinance. The truth is, right now, all of the union is reporting to a director of DPW or the Controller, which is also a director. This is saying, I need to stop taking time away from the Controller, which is probably your most important position, and then your second most important position is your Department of Public Works. This is saying, we are creating this position here, that, that instead of them reporting to A and B, you're now reporting directly to C, and this is where you're going to be able to direct your conversations with. This is where now the council can stop having to hear calls about their water bills. We need to stop seeing things on social media about their water bills. This individual will be able to tackle this. It's not going to be easy, and this, this position is not going to be an easy position. I'm telling you right now, and so when it comes down back to the union, like, did we speak with the union? I mean, the reality is, the union is reporting to a higher person currently, right now. This is saying, we can't afford to continue to say, Mahdi, stop working on bank reconciliations and go figure out what's happening with this water bill. Hey, DPW, we need you to stop making sure that the streets are being cleaned and, and things are being properly done across the Department of Public Works. Go take a look at what's happening with this water meter. We can't do that no more. Uh, it's not structurally the right way to go. And then also moving to a, a, a meter that's digital is quite, uh, quite tough as well. I mean, we need to get in with the program. I didn't want to kind of break this news here just yet, but I figured, I thought, you know, I would wait a couple of days, but just to take a low-hanging fruit, myself and Mahdi have been speaking with, and our IT director, and our chief of staff have been having a conversation with Neptune, which is going to offer the city of Dearborn Heights directly on its website, an app free to all residents, that's going to allow people to be able to see their usages on their water, which has never happened before. And this is going to be completely free to all residents. You'll be able to go on our city website, click a link, you'll be able to put in your address, create an account, because you can't check all the people's water usages.
I think that is a round of applause, Mayor.
But, but we're, we're, we, we need to be able to allow residents, and now, and now, instead of the person sitting at the Water Department saying, well, you must have a leak, go call your plumber, this meter will be able to show you where your highest usage is per hour, per day, per week, per, per units, per gallon. Is it happening at seven PM? Is it happening at two AM? Well, if everybody's sleeping at two AM and your water's still running, then you have a leak. You no longer have to tell them, well, you might have a leak, go hire a plumber. We're going to take that burden away from our residents, and we're going to offer a service that costs the residents absolutely nothing. For too long, we've all heard water bills, water bills, water bills. Here is a step right now, where we're saying in just thirty-five days, we've put something out there for our residents. But this is the first step, making sure that if there is a leak, they have somebody to go speak to. Maybe it's an issue with, with, with our new water meters. We don't know. But we need to make sure that we're being structured, we're being organized, and saying that, well, we don't have a director, we don't have a department. I know Councilman Wenzel wants to like maybe have these conversations with different unions. The truth is, the city has a little over two hundred fifty people part of the unions. We have about fifteen department heads, so you have very little bit of management. I don't think this is a way to say, oh, we want, you know, we need to consult a little bit more here. I've heard the concerns for both residents and union employees, and I can tell you right now, I work for everybody, but I also have to keep in mind that there's no structure, there's no matrix of how things are working in the city. And so this is one step to help the residents, it's going to help our employees, it's going to help the union. This takes a lot of stress. I, I, I sit at City Hall from eight-thirty in the morning, or probably get there on like nine-fifteen, to be honest. But I get there on nine-fifteen, I'm here till like six o'clock. People are being screamed and yelled at. Our employees are not punching banks, so I'm going to make things easier for them, and I'm going to also make things easier for our residents, and this is the perfect fit.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Chair.
Court Counsel, can you say something?
Yes, if, if, if I may. This ordinance was drafted, taking into account some of the concerns that certain people, union and otherwise, had ended up mentioning. It has all the appropriate carve-outs to avoid any sort of problem under the charter. Uh, there is not a problem with regard to the collective bargaining agreements. One, the position would be an executive level employee, would not be at a level where they would be included within the lower union positions, and therefore there would not be a problem. Uh, it doesn't affect their promotional path, and it doesn't affect the DPW supervisors, because they do not actually supervise the individuals who are involved, so involved with the management rights. So we've been very mindful of the issues that might be raised by the union, but I believe that this is definitely in compliance with the agreements and the city charter, and does not present an issue, so it should be fine legally. Thank you.
Thank you, Court Counsel. Councilman?
Do we have any union representatives on Zoom?
I don't think we need to hear from anybody, Councilman.
No?
It's, it's a council meeting. I don't think we need to hear from anybody. Uh, any more discussion? Any more discussion? I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Uh, do you want to take a roll call? No, sorry.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
I'm not sure. I, I want to talk to the union people. I did talk to one about it, and they, they weren't too really clear about some things, so I can't, I can't vote yes on something.
Council, yes or no, please? Say yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Which one?
Which one?
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
And Robert Caston?
Yes.
Motion carries, six one.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to eleven C. Mayor Baydun, first reading of proposed ordinance H two five twelve, Department of Grants.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
With the Dearborn Heights City Council move that proposed ordinance number H two five one two, an ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights, providing that chapter two of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Dearborn Heights be amended by adding article twelve, section two, dash one three oh one, regarding the departments of grants be considered read for the first time as outlined in eleven C.
Second. A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Discussion, Court Counsel, I have a question, and part B says the city council believes that the proper administration of the business of the city required the department to exist. Shouldn't we say the city council and administration?
Well, this is a, a document that reflects the will of the city council.
Council. So how come it's coming from the mayor, then?
Well, normally, things are proposed through the mayor, but the city council is the voice when it comes to ordinances and resolutions.
Fair enough, thank you. Any discussion from council members?
Counsel Chair.
Mayor?
Sorry, Gary and I, I don't know if I had this conversation with you, but since it's here, I want to bring it up to you. I've kept them very busy. I could have swore when we brought in a temporary grant writer, I think in twenty twenty-one, I remember approving a resolution to adopting this, this position.
I do not know, I don't recall exactly how that was done, or if it was fully done. I think there was some issue about it, but I don't know if it was done appropriately. This doesn't appropriate.
Okay, whatever you say. I just, I didn't know if it was done appropriately or not.
Thank you, Mayor. Any more discussion from council members? Yes, Madam President?
I did look into that.
You did, because I thought I asked you.
And it was to authorize the mayor to fill this position temporarily for a period of six months.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and moving on to eleven D. Treasurer Hicks Clay and Resolution Support Michigan House Bill five two two five of twenty twenty-five.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the resolution to support House Bill five two two five of twenty twenty-five, which proposes, proposes to raise the maximum household income level for summer tax deferment eligibility to sixty thousand for seniors, veterans, disabled homeowners, resolving the following. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Dearborn Heights hereby expresses its full support of House Bill five two two five of twenty twenty-five, urges the Michigan Legislature to enact this legislation. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution shall be transmitted to the sponsors of House Bill five two two five, Michigan Association of Counties, Michigan Townships Association, and our elected representatives in the Michigan House and Senate, as outlined in eleven D.
A motion by Councilwoman Breyer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wenzel.
Counsel Chair.
Uh, Councilman?
Shouldn't it just be a note and file?
Correct. Uh, Councilman?
See, note and file.
I mean, to be honest with you, I did look into this house bill. So basically, there is a house bill that limits up to forty thousand for household income. So there's a new proposed bill that to increase it to sixty thousand. I, I went on the state website, and I guess this is, still has a second reading to go to, and it's within the committee. Madam Treasurer, she's basically trying to show support to send it to the state.
And that's fine.
Yeah, to show our support. But, yeah, I mean, I mean, it could be a note and file, it could be whatever you want to do with it. Council Chair. Councilman?
Yeah, the only issue is, so it, it means the city will lose revenue. I mean, it'll be a very small amount, but if those taxes are deferred, or that's that much less that we receive, I don't think that's true.
Also, Councilman?
I'm, I'm looking at the.
Uh, the only revenue the city will loses would be the penalty. Instead, again, the taxes in, in August will be pushed to March with no penalty, basically. Uh, but now, if we, once they increase it to sixty thousand, then probably more people will qualify with that deferment. Uh, but once the state approves it, approves that bill, I mean, we have no say. We have to abide by it. But for now, either we can support this, to show our support to the state, or we can just take a note and file. It's up to you guys. Okay, note and file? I'm sorry, Councilman, you had something to say?
Yeah, one thing, it hasn't been upgraded in twenty-five years, so that's a point to be made also.
Correct, but the only, the only concern I have that is still with the state and the second reading, so I'm not sure, like, what kind of reading it's going to have, so I can't vote on something that I can't see, you know what I mean?
Right.
Uh, so, I mean, if you guys want to do it note and file, that would be great. Would you like to amend your motion to make a note and file?
Yes, I will.
It, it was referred to the government operations. That's where I was chair of government operations. I was in Lansing for two years. That's where bills go to die, so I, I don't know that anything's going to happen with it, but either way, it's, I mean, it's good, it's educational that we understand this and show support for our veterans.
Definitely, and seniors. Thank you very much, Councilman. So, Councilwoman Breyer would like to amend your motion to make it note and file?
I will do so. I will make a mention, amend it to note and file.
Would you like to second that? Okay, any more discussion? See none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries, moving on to eleven E. Mayor Baydun and Council Chair Ahmad, resolution regarding severance.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman?
Many guys, your resolutions are getting longer and longer.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the resolution regarding agreement to pay severance, whereas the city council has become aware of litigation that the prior administration agreed to pay severance based to some Merrill appointees, whereas the city council and the current administration have become aware of more recently, the prior administration agreed to pay severance in addition, to additional Merrill appointees, whereas the city council had never authorized the prior administration to agree to pay severance package to any Merrill appointees, whereas the city council had never authorized the prior administration to pay severance to any Merrill appointees. Whereas the city council has even expressly prohibited prohibited the payment of severance to any current or former employees of the city. Whereas the prior administration's agreement to pay severance have violated the city charter and are thus void. Whereas the prior administration's actual payments of the severance has also violated the city charter and otherwise violated the law. Whereas the city council wants to make its expectations clear related to these unauthorized agreements and the action of and by any prior administration related to the severance. Now therefore, before let it resolve that all, number one, all agreements of the prior administrations to pay severance to Merrill appointees or any other current or former employees of the city are declared void because they were made in violation of the city charter. Further, all actions of the prior administration to make such payments likewise violate the city charter. Number two, the current administration is directed to refuse to pay any severance to any Merrill appointees or any other current or former employee of the city unless the city council expressly authorizes the current amount, the current administration to enter into an agreement to pay the severance and further authorize the current administration to pay any such severance as outlined in eleven E.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. So basically, like, Councilman Saab has read and mentioned, previous administration has approved severance to different appointees by the administration without council approval. This is just to make clear that all these severances are null and void, because we're not approved by this council body, and for the current administration to refuse any payment for such. Any discussion for council members? Counsel Chair. Councilman?
You know, I remember way back, maybe Gary Miyaki also recalls, when Lyle Van Houten was mayor, there was a compensation commission in a race to the elected officials, and Lyle Van Houten was subject to a recall. There's no ultra-virus acts, and there was a lot of problems with the prior administration about some changes not affirmed by the council, the police department, and elsewhere. So I think this is a great idea.
Counsel Chair. Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Thank you, and, you know, when, when, when I had this conversation with Gary, or, what should we say, our court counsel, you know, I reflected back on a lot that we have went through. Dearborn Heights has been through so much, and we can't afford to go through anymore. Can't afford to go through any more federal litigation. We have been able to set aside special legal counsel from the Clallaw and Hamud. We're able to no longer have to pay the Dearborn Heights's councils, special legal council anymore, now that we, I hope we see eye to eye, and so that we can save taxpayers some money. We've also said we no longer want to pay opinion letters from all these other attorneys when we have one of the best attorneys. In my personal opinion, when it comes to municipal or labor, Gary Miyaki is second to none. And I'll, I'll take that to the bank in any city. Nobody's got one like what we have, and I mean that. Gary Miyaki is second to none. And I'll, I'll take that to the bank in any city. Nobody's got one like what we have. And I mean that. He may have his, you know, differences here and there and, you know, he's, that's his lawyer side of him. Don't tell me I can't do this and I'll tell him Hussein. I want to also introduce Hussein Saad, who's our Chief of Staff, um, who is, who is also an attorney. And so when I was having a conversation with Mike Duggan and saying, what do you think we need to do in Dearborn Heights? How do we save money? He said, get an opinion letter from the person that works for you. And if you can find one as your Chief of Staff. I looked around and just so happened, he's an attorney and he gives me free opinion letters and the city saves a lot of money. But, but what we've been able to do was, uh, instead of having a in-house prosecutor, instead of having an in-house corp counsel, instead of having a labor attorney, instead of having all these different opinion letters, since coming in, we've eliminated all those. And when Gary's not doing the docket, Hussein is assisting in the docket. You're still just paying the same individuals instead of having to pay the $20,000 here, the $20,000 there. We're no longer having to get an opinion letter from our labor attorneys. Not that they weren't a good, good labor attorneys. I think they're all great. We want to be able to keep things in-house. We want to find ways to give employees to do more than just one job. Um, and so one of the things that I did on first day was, please tell me what your description is, what your next 30-day plan is, and then if you have a contract, please send it over to me. There's quite a few contracts out there still today. I want to be clear. This here right now is not to say we're going to hurt anybody or take things away, especially during the holidays. But this is a way to say, there are 64,000 residents that are expecting us to do the best that we can. And this is a way that I have to put residents before any employee, any director, any union, any council member, any mayor. This all belongs to the residents. And so that's what I'm doing here today. I am putting out transparency. We're saying we're not paying anybody any severance. And if you are an at-will employee and don't have a job, Dearborn Heights is not forced to pay you. And so that's what this is all about today. Transparency.
Yeah, any unauthorized. Thank you, Mayor. Any, any more discussion for council members? I see, Councilman.
Thank you. I, I don't know. Do we need to add on there that this should take effect immediately upon passing this resolution?
Once the resolutions are passed, it's, it's, it's.
Immediately?
Yeah.
Also, Councilman.
City Attorney, I guess something to say.
Just, I.
Or Council?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilman, uh, or Council Chair Protam Saab noticed it when he was reading this. In the, the second from last whereas paragraph, it says, any actual payments of this severance has, it should be have. Does that change everything?
I changed that. Yeah, I said, I changed that in my.
When you read that?
Oh, okay. All right. Well, but it, it, it just.
But I will note it.
Just like the, the mayor said, I have my lawyerly side then.
It gets annoying sometimes.
Thank you very much, uh, Corp Counsel. Uh, oh, okay, let's take it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. We have no communication, no new business, uh, comment from council members. I'm gonna go first. Um, I would, I would like to, uh, thank Councilman Wenzel for that amazing event with, for the seniors. God bless you for doing that and, uh, for helping out, uh, last season. I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, DPW, uh, Department of, uh, Parks and Recreation, and Councilman Saab, uh, for, uh, the lights and doing an amazing job walking into the city. And also Councilman Saab, I'd like to thank you for the, um, act of kindness that I saw on, uh, social media. Thank you for being there for the residents. That's really nice of you, especially in this blessed, uh, season. And also I'd like to, uh, address the recent events that took place in our neighboring city of Dearborn last week. These incidents have stirred emotions and raised concerns among many in our community here in Dearborn Heights. I want to take this opportunity to express my solidarity with the residents of Dearborn during this challenging time. It is essential that we come together as neighbors, supporting one another, and working hand in hand to address the issues that affect us all. Essentially, I want to emphasize that hate has no place in our community. The group of individuals that showed up to divide us failed, as we are one community regardless of our background or faith. We are a welcoming community and we must continue to uplift one another despite the national media may portray. Together as a unified community, we can strengthen our bonds and create a safer, more inclusive environment for all. As we gather to celebrate Thanksgiving, I want to express my gratitude for all Dearborn Heights residents. This time of year, remind us of the importance of community, connection, and kindness. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, let us reflect on the blessing we share, the support we offer one another, and the diversity that makes Dearborn Heights such a wonderful place to call home. Whether you are celebrating with family, friends, or neighbors, may your day be filled with joy, love, and delicious food. Thank you for being a vital part of our community, and let's continue to support and lift one another as we move the city forward together. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your loved ones. Thank you very much. Council members, any comment from anybody?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Yeah, uh, very good words, uh, Council Chair. Um, I too want to thank Councilman Saab for all he did. Uh, I too want to express solidarity, uh, with our neighboring city of Dearborn. Uh, both Dearborn and Dearborn Heights were a diverse community, but we respect the freedom of religion that were guaranteed by the Constitution. And, uh, shame on anyone to come into, uh, Dearborn and try to profile a name call. Um, uh, and, uh, also I just want to bring up very disturbing the, what's going on in the Middle East and the bombing even of the capital of Lebanon Beirut, just unilaterally, uh, bombing, uh, Beirut, uh, taking land from, uh, Lebanon. Uh, it's not something that, uh, the US should be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I know, thank you very much for your kind words, Councilman. I know I mentioned all departments and I thank all departments for the hard work on the, uh, holiday and Christmas, uh, lighting, but I do want to thank the mayor. I know it's under your leadership and direction. Thank you for bringing all this lifefulness to the city and, um, you know, for everybody to enjoy. So thank you, Mayor.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I can't add any more to your statement that would mean any more than what it says. Uh, I live in a predominantly, uh, Muslim neighborhood, and I can't think of better people than my neighbors. I, I, I can't. No one has ever approached me telling me that I have to do this or do that. We love one another. I mean, when neighbors can share car keys and, and, and house keys and, and trust one another as we trust each other, that says it all to me. And I once said something that my house is worth probably $150,000 more than anybody else's because I live next to Sam and Lisa Miller. Okay? And I, I truly mean that from the bottom of my heart. Okay? Uh, they have accepted me as their family. I accept them as my family. And, and if I ever became lucky enough to win a billion dollars, I'll buy a piece of property where I can take all my neighbors with me. Because God, God knows, they're, they're, they're the most wonderful people that I've ever met in my life. Okay? And, and, and that's, that's the honest to God truth and that comes from my heart. Not saying that to grandstand or anything, but I've been so blessed to, to know these people and, and I love them dearly with all my heart. And, um, but I, I have one thing that I wanted to say and I was hoping the Chief of Police would have stayed here. But as I drive around, and I've mentioned this once before, uh, a number of years ago, the use, the illegal use of the center left-hand turn lane for merging. It almost makes you afraid to make a legal left-hand turn when people are driving down the center left-hand turn lane. I, I, we've got to do something to enforce that because just the other day, I'm pulling into the left-hand turn lane and some guy's trying to merge. I can't get into the left-hand turn lane. That, driving 101. And, 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 and it's just not Dearborn Heights or Dearborn. It's the whole state. Everybody's doing it for some reason. And if we don't start issuing tickets and putting points on people's licenses and, and, and making their insurance sky high, people are just not going to drive according to the law. They're not. They get to go and get things dismissed or, uh, back down to, uh, impeding traffic. That's not the way to teach people. Uh, and, and I'm adamant on that. And I, I was hoping that the, the Chief would have been here to see that and, um, uh, to hear that, maybe comment on it. But maybe I, I can wait for a comment if he either calls me or emails me or maybe next in two weeks. But again, I want to wish everybody a, a very happy Thanksgiving for everyone's families. God bless everybody. Uh, we are one city and, and let's, and, and, and it looks like we're moving forward to that. We're, we're in that right direction. So, uh, thank God for that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much, Councilman. And, um, regarding the traffic, I think everybody blames it on COVID. But we'll, we'll keep it, we'll leave it for the Chief. But I do want to thank you for your kind words and I, um, I wish maybe, uh, any of the national media can get hold of you and take your statement because I do thank you for that statement, especially for the Millers.
Believe me, I, 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 I truly mean it. And, and again, I just want to say one other thing. I've got to know Councilman Protam Hassan Saab, uh, a little more in the last six months. And I, I've really learned to respect him greatly. He's not one that likes the limelight. Trust me, he does not like it. But he does what he does out of the goodness of his heart. And, and, uh, he needs more than a, than just an applause. And, uh, just on another note, you made me sad today by sending those pictures to me.
Sorry, Gary. But I appreciate the comment.
An empty machine shop. But, but that's okay. Uh, but I thank you very kindly, sir, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Council Chair. Councilman.
I want to touch on a few things. Uh, I've been, uh, something's been on my mind for a while. And I think, you know, I said, I'm gonna sit back before I address that, but I'm gonna address that tonight. First of all, I want to stand with the people of Dearborn and what's going on in Dearborn and so many other communities in our area. Um, I'm almost 40 years old. I've never seen this type of hate ever. We grew up in a household where, you know, my parents taught me everybody puts on their pants the same way. Everybody bleeds red. But recently, I was sent some really highly inappropriate screenshots of text messages from some colleagues up here targeting Arab Americans on this council. Reading those comments was extremely disappointing and honestly, frankly, very upsetting. Especially coming from someone who holds a position where respect, integrity, and professionalism should be a standard. The Arab American, uh, community is the core, is a core part of this, uh, city's identity. Families here are friends, are neighbors, people I've grown up with, people I serve with and alongside with. Any attempt to demean them or single them out is unacceptable. It goes about, everything about public service, what it stands for. I will not tolerate prejudice or hate in any form from anybody. Every resident deserves dignity, respect, and fairness regardless of their background. My commitment for standing up this community does not waver. I don't care what color you are. I don't care what race you are. I don't care what religion you follow, or even if you don't follow one. Doesn't matter. I will always call out this behavior that undermines unity and respect in the city of Dearborn Heights. And the only reason I have not released Santos screenshots out to anybody because when the time is right, the only person that's gonna get those is the media, because it's wrong. It's shame on the people on this council that sent those messages. And again, we try to reunite the city, not divide the city. These text messages that were sent to some residents that I received were so disappointing and heartbreaking because I live next to Christians. I actually, one of my neighbors is Jewish. I have no problem with anybody in this community. And it shouldn't be based on religion or what we're trying to take over or what we need them to take over the city. And such comments is unacceptable, unprofessional, and shame on them. My other thing is, is I had a resident marker reach out about the electric scooters. And I've addressed this multiple times, the police department. These scooters are faster than cars going down side streets. And it's not safe. To the parents out there, your kid's gonna get killed. Your kid's gonna. Or, no, they're gonna get killed. When they get hit by a car, they're not gonna survive the hit, how fast these kids go down the streets. I addressed this multiple times. And the responsibility and duty falls back to the parent. The city of Dearborn Heights is not your babysitter. You know, be, be a more responsible parent. One other thing too, about all the comments coming up here about how I helped out this family. If you can help out your neighbor, a friend, and you're capable of doing it, just do it. I don't do it for the recognition like Councilman Ray Musket said, never expecting this post to be on social media. But if you can help somebody, it's the season. Whether it is the season or not, help everybody. And just, just a little more, um, attention to this, tomorrow, on behalf of Councilmen, Chairman Ahmad and Mobey Dunne and myself, that family's gonna get, um, a really good, uh, holiday gift from us. I'm glad for the three of us. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe holiday. And I hope, Mayor, you stay to your word and get that tree in on time, or else we're gonna have a miniature Christmas tree. Or else we're gonna have a mini, uh, miniature Christmas tree outside. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Any more comments from council members?
Council Chair. I'd just like to thank all of those who participated in the free turkey giveaway at Robishaw on Saturday. They did a great job and I thank your group very much for participating.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that it was, uh, thank you, Councilwoman. It was an amazing event. Uh, and I do want to thank LAHC, uh, Mayor Baydoun, Dearborn Heights Police Department, and the Explorers, uh, for helping out. And, uh, we, uh, we were able to distribute over, I think, almost 600 turkeys, uh, that day. Yeah, so, uh, much blessing for everyone. So I do want to thank them all for the hard work. Um, and, uh, any more comments? Councilman?
Council Chair. Thank you. Um, I want to echo all the, uh, sentiments about the, uh, issue in Dearborn from all our council members. Couldn't agree more. Um, what I want, like to do is, uh, I want to thank the, uh, our police reserves. I don't think they get the, the attention, the recognition they get. They, they show up at the, uh, recently at a football game. They had to take care of a little situation going on and, uh, I tell them I'd, I'd make, I should make sure I mentioned it at a council meeting. Thank you all the reserves that show up and participate in our community activities. And also, um, we had the honor this past weekend, uh, the Chief and all kinds of people were there. They raked leaves for, uh, original Rosie the Riveter, 97-year-old Catherine of Dearborn Heights. And she was very grateful. And, uh, we're gonna be rebuilding her porch as a wooden porch. It's rotted out a little bit. She stepped on it and broke her ankle. She was in the hospital for a few days, so we're gonna be doing that. And I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Um, we, you know, we all, no matter how much we complain, we all have a lot to give thanks for. And that couldn't be true than, uh, my family. We have so much to give thanks for, for our community. Thank you, everyone, for helping us out so much.
Thank you, Councilman, again, for your kind, uh, event. That's, that's, that was amazing. We do thank you. Any more comments? I see none. Uh, announcement from officials?
Here, you know, I'm gonna, I got a list.
Okay.
First and foremost, I want to thank.
Can we, can we time the mayor?
Yes, yes. I'm not gonna sit up here by myself and not talk for almost two hours and not be able to speak after. I want to thank Rose Trepepi, first and foremost, for these ads that she's given me. Uh, she knows that I love, she knows that I love dogs. Her name's up at the top. And, um, I, Rose, thank you so much. I'm thankful for you. She comes in, pops in, always wants to get me lunch. I'm better than Councilman Ahmad and Saab or the rest of the council. Nobody, nobody's offered to me.
For the record, that's why he hasn't called us out for lunch in the past two weeks.
Fun fact, I bought them lunch, I bought them lunch today. Yes. See that, how quiet they got? Uh, but really, I want, I want to address a few things here. Um, look, I'm not some like big, tough, scary guy, but there are times where like I, I stand firm. I'm not like Dave Abdullah saying, I went to Forts and I went to Crestwood and I'm happy about that. Um, but the truth is, I've been getting a ton of threats. Uh, threats to the city. They're calling the fire department. They've contacted the police department, saying, where's this Muslim mayor? Uh, somebody called our building department today, said, where is, what is his address? I'm gonna come shoot up his home. Uh, we, we are taking this, you know, all the right precautions. I know you guys have, you sound like my wife, but it's becoming to the point where now like they're asking, where do I live? Um, you know, we know we're gonna find them, we're gonna catch them. It's not fair. It's not nice. Um, but the truth is that we are living in a time where Dearborn and Dearborn Heights is being hyper-focused across the media and, and they're spending tons of millions of dollars and they're putting their focus on, on Muslim Americans, especially Muslim American leaders, uh, like myself, Councilman Ahmad, Councilman Saab, uh, because they are of, of Muslim faith. myself, Councilman Ahmad, Councilman Sab, because they are of Muslim faith. My message to those individuals is that Dearborn Heights is not gonna back down from you. Dearborn Heights is not afraid of you. The threats that are coming in won't be tolerated, and they will be prosecuted. As you know, that there was a threat that was made to a local mosque. The police chief and our detective bureau, with a lot of our support, I talked about this last week, was able to apprehend this man all the way from Chicago. I can tell you that we're not gonna stop. We are going to document these, you know, phone numbers. We're gonna work, we're gonna reach out to the FBI, and we're not gonna take anything lightly, and we're gonna set examples. But what I can tell you is that the threats are continuous, and I am now randomly answering the phone because we don't want Stephanie answering the calls. I don't want, it becomes an embarrassment, and I don't want to scare people in the community. So I'm answering the phone and saying, like, can you please stop? This has begun too far. So if any of you are getting these type of text messages or calls, I want you to know that it's happening to us. I am gonna reach out to the police department for potential protection, just because, like, nothing is willing of me to risk my life, or this, you know, for my family, my children, but I'm also not gonna back down. But I just wanted to put that out to the public. It's becoming a lot worse than it was. You know, I get once occasionally on social media, it has been like almost every 10 minutes, if you see my phone, it is a threat or Sharia law, or there's-
That nobody knows anything about.
Yeah, yeah. The Muslims need to leave. Why are you in this country? The Democrats have ruined this country. Whatever it is. But it's becoming, you know, taking a toll, and it's time where, like, I have to now think, I have two young children, I want to make sure my children are safe. I'm not somebody that walks around walking with a gun, but I also am not gonna be somebody that's going to back away or back down. So I want you to know you're a tough mayor, even though I might look, you know, a bit skinny. The next thing is, my little brother watches every single city council meeting since I've been on council. For four and a half years, he's watched every single city council meeting, and he sends me a whole briefing of, why did this person say this? Why did you not agree with this? And so right now, he's going through and telling me, you better have your Amazon photos up to date. So believe it or not, he's keeping up to date with me and making sure that we're following the rules. So when you said it, I was like, man, my brother's gonna message me on it, but it's also a special weekend. He's getting married this Saturday.
God bless him.
He's getting married to his high school sweetheart. They both went to Crestwood. They just purchased a home in the city of Dearborn Heights. He's beyond happy. I'm so happy for him. I'm actually so proud of him. He's probably gonna watch this video and be like, oh, wow. He's probably gonna rewind this like six times. Hattie, we are so happy for you, we're so proud of you, and I wish you and Jenna all the amount of love. I just celebrated seven years of my anniversary with my wife, my beautiful wife, Leila, who I love dearly. She's gonna, like, tell me I'm not-
Is that why you're itching? Seven-year itch?
Yeah, seven years. How did I get there, right? I haven't gotten a shave. But the truth is, my family loves to get married, and my friends, we like to get married on the weekend of Thanksgiving. Everybody's home, elder relatives are here from out of town, we're thankful for Thursday, but we celebrate big on Saturday. So I did this seven years ago, my brother's doing it this Saturday, my sister did it, my other sister did it. Just so happens, everybody in my family gets married on the weekend of Thanksgiving. And so that's amazing. And I want everybody to know, I am thankful for everybody in the city, but most importantly, our police and fire will be still working on Thanksgiving. So I'm extra thankful to the men and women of our police and fire. Let's give them a round of applause. This man does not like recognition, and I'm not talking about Councilman Sab because he does like recognition. This man that doesn't like the recognition is actually Mr. Farhat, Director Farhat, has been doing a phenomenal job in our own department.
You know, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, since you mentioned-
Hang on one second, we're gonna get there, buddy. I'm gonna take this, but you missed your shot. You missed your shot. You missed your shot. It's actually his birthday.
Yep.
And I want to wish-
Happy birthday!
I want to wish our Director Farhat a happy birthday. He's somebody that truly cares about Dearborn Heights, a little bit too much sometimes. I'm like, hey, relax, go home, go see your children. But I'll call him in the middle of the night because I'm reading a Facebook message, like a resident saying, hey, I'm having trouble with my neighbor next door. I'll take the screenshot, I'll text it to him at like 10 o'clock while I'm laying in bed. His message to me will be, you want me to go right now? No! No! Absolutely not. But let me tell you, you can't buy that. You can't pay that. That is somebody that's rooted in our community, that is somebody that really, really cares. And even on his birthday, he comes out and says, I don't want any spotlight, let me recognize my staff, my employees. And so when you talk about leadership, that's what I think about in Dearborn Heights. Mr. Farhat, we love you for that as well, and I did not want to go away for that. Lastly, I know that everybody has looked outside. Again, Councilman Sab purchased the lights for the outside, which looks stunning, but it wasn't him that installed it. It was his idea. He didn't work in the cold, he didn't work in the rain. It was our DPW employees, and every day I looked out the window, including today in the rain, while they were jumped, while they were jumping into a 15-foot hole to fix a water main break on two parts of the city, one in the south, one in the north. So I don't want to hear, oh, well, the south end or the north end gets this and they get that. We had two water main breaks that tells you both of our cities' infrastructures, that both the north and the south suck. We're gonna find a way. We're gonna, we're gonna find a way to kind of fix that and be able to stop dividing the 4812s. We're gonna call it 4812 moving forward. It's not, we're not gonna end, we're gonna call it 4812 and just stop. All right? There's no more 4812-5, 4812-7s in Dearborn Heights. We're gonna pass a day where we no longer allow to use anything past 4812 when we talk about our zip codes. And this might bother a lot of you, but at this point, I don't really care. Actually, I'm not gonna say that just yet because it's gonna bother a lot of you. Let's recognize the two students from Crestwood High School who are here from the government class. They're taking notes, they're probably thinking, what an awesome mayor, what a terrible Councilman Sab. I'm like, yes. I'm like, yes. They're like, Ray Musket's cool. I said, I know, that's why, you know what? That's why he's up there. But really, thank you, guys. Thank you for being involved. And then the last closing remarks are, go Buckeyes this weekend.
You know what? I thought you were a good guy.
You gotta be kidding.
But, no, seriously, on a serious note, Council Chair, Mr. Mayor, if we ever have outsiders come to our city like they did to Dearborn, I feel we should, nobody should show up.
Yes.
Nobody give them, don't give them any spotlight whatsoever. That will kill them more than we go out there and argue with them. Leave them alone, turn the lights off, and say, see you later, okay? Well, let them come to the council meeting, say goodbye, and that's it. But we don't have to show up at any demonstration.
Sure. All right, thank you very much.
And there's certain guidelines they do have to follow here.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I just want to, I'm gonna keep this short and sweet because I think you all covered exactly how I feel. There's only a couple more people I would like to thank, and it is Mayor Moby Dunne's parents for bringing such a lovely man to us, providing him with the leadership that he has, and his wife, Leila, and his children for giving their time up for us. For us, what's that?
The real mayor.
And Moby Dunne, thank you. You're the person that can bring this city forward.
Together, not me. Together. Director?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of items. First off, Saturday, December 13th, from 12 to 4:00 p.m. at JFK Library, we will be having a winter open house. Join us for our annual holiday open house at the JFK Junior Library. Walk through our holiday tree village. If anyone wants to adopt a tree and decorate it, please do. You can vote for your favorite tree, enjoy the hot chocolate and dessert bar, create a holiday craft, learn about our many databases, sign up for a library card, shop our local vendors, and sit and enjoy music. We will have some surprise guests and lots of fun items to win at our tin can raffles. Come on out. Next, our seasonal cookie kits are accepting registrants all the way through December 5th. Our delivery will start the week of December 8th. We have over 1,200 registrations so far. Sign up at dhlibrary.org if you would like a seasonal cookie decorating kit. Finally, our mural at CK is finished. Chelsea Hensbergen completed her 45-foot-long, 5-foot-high mural in the kids' area. It really transforms what was just a plain green wall for about 20 years. So feel free to take a look. Looks really, really good. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library, everybody.
Thank you, Director.
Any more announcement from city officials? I see none.
Council Chair?
I just want to do, kind of build on Mayor Baidun's comments, with the fire and the police working all Thanksgiving, I want to also give my hat, tip my hat to the DPW department who will be working on any water main break Thanksgiving morning also. They're out there 24/7 also.
Hundred percent. Thank you, Councilman. I agree. Moving on to public comments. You have three minutes, no debate. Please state your names, street and city.
Hi, Sue Sachada from the Times Herald. In terms of scooter safety, I would urge you to talk to the police chief at Melvendale. They have launched school safety seminars already, and they have gotten a business to donate helmets so that many children will be safe with helmets when they do wear scooters, when they ride scooters, so they're gonna keep their heads safe. Also, I trust that the police department will work with Dearborn's PD. Mayor Hamud has had death threats for years. He has had a police bodyguard. He has accepted fewer bodyguards than the police department wanted him to accept. And I think they could take a good page out of Dearborn's book on how to protect not only the mayor, but his family as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. I just want to echo everything that anybody has said about what's going on and what Dearborn had faced. It is sickening. There is no place for it in this world. We all bleed red, just like you said, Hassan, or Hassan Sab. There's no, it's sickening. It drives me nuts. We all know, we're all family. We're not divided. We are united. I just want to say Thanksgiving to everybody, and please stay safe. And it's, it's sickening and needs to end, and I just, I can't believe people do that. It's just my opinions. But I love you all and thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman-elect. Any more comments from anybody in person? Please state your name, street, and city you live in. You have three minutes.
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights. My trash day is on Wednesday, my trash day is tomorrow. Last Wednesday on trash day, the street sweepers came by, picking up the leaves, which is great, except for the dozen cars that are in the street on trash day. Are we gonna start taking these cars? I mean, what are we gonna do with these cars? I saw the street sweeper marks, I saw them go in and out, in and out, in and out. I mean, I know this administration's new. Mayor Baidun's been here for two cups of coffee now instead of one. But we do need to ticket these cars so they can move, so the DPW can do their job, so the trash people can do their job. When I worked down, down there, the DPW clerical staff would get calls that my trash wasn't picked up, my trash wasn't picked up. They have cameras in these trash trucks, and the trash company comes back and say, there's a car parked in front of it. I mean, we can't get our trash picked up, we can't get our streets swept, and I know the administration's new and everybody's working on stuff, but people have been complaining about this for a long time, and we need to, I know we're short on officers, we need to get to, you know, step up, ticket these people so they move their cars. I want to say one thing about the Dearborn thing. I did watch this guy on social media, he did a video that he wanted to go down to Dearborn to see what all this Muslim stuff was about, and he came away with a completely different attitude than when he walked down there. He said he couldn't believe how friendly Dearborn residents were. I believe Dearborn, Dearborn Heights were all the same type of people, were all friendly. I believe that if he would have come to Dearborn Heights, it'd be the same thing. But Dearborn did change at least one person. He did say on social media that he had a whole change of views after he was down, down there. And water still does not roll uphill on Arnold Street either. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I know we addressed it with the chief last time, and I'll make sure to address it again, and I'll talk to the mayor to make sure, you know, people don't park on trash day.
Work with their cans.
Any more in person? I see none. Let's move to Zoom. Madam Clerk, please. Renee?
Oh, that's me, Renee. Indianapolis, Dearborn Heights.
Please go ahead.
Okay. I was part of the leaf-sweeping brigade the other day with Councilman Wenzel. That was so much fun, I cannot even believe it, you know? You can't even imagine, once you're out there and start moving, how much work you can do in bending and twisting and moving that you haven't done in years. And it was phenomenal. And the kids, I believe, pardon me?
I said, hello chiropractor.
No, I'm telling you, and I believe one of, one of the guys there that's taking notes, one of the students, was one of the kids that had told me that he was supposed to attend the city council meeting, so I hope that's his guy. And it was just really fun to work together, you know, and I appreciated, I had a brilliant idea that probably wasn't a good idea for the leaf area, but something that we would take home. And the police chief, you know, kind of, kind of told me very nicely that, eh, probably not a good idea to have to do it over there, but it was an idea I saw on Facebook about helping more leaves get in a bag. But that was, it was so much fun, and it was just, if I don't, if I understand correctly, we got pretty close to 100 bags of leaves that day. I'm not sure, I have to ask Mr. Wenzel. It was fun. And just want to let you guys know, I'm still praying for all you guys. I'm praying protection now over you, I'm gonna make sure that I step that up. I don't necessarily agree with all the kumbaya for Dearborn, considering the mayor's recent statements and the recent actions, but no place for violence, no place for craziness. There is no place for that. I agree with that also. So I will continue to pray for your safety, guys. So thanks and have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks for your help, Renee.
You too, thank you for your, for your efforts last Saturday for helping people out. Thank you very much.
I can't wait for a first milk, for example.
Madam Clerk, moving on. Madam Treasurer?
Hello.
If you're driving, please focus on driving, you don't need to-
I am focused on driving, absolutely. But I did want to share, probably for the mayor, first of all, Mayor, and anybody, I'm very sorry if you're experiencing that. No one should ever be treated that way. Everybody should be treated with respect and dignity. I'm very sorry that's happening to you and your family, or anyone else that's experienced that. I'm very sorry. So I did want to mention that there was a discussion, it's a concern regarding GFL during school dismissal times, and just want, I know this has been discussed before, trying to coordinate that I am not a trash holler, so I don't know what that looks like in their world for scheduling-wise, but I understand that it's been some concerns with parents during pickup time, navigating around these trash trucks. And also residents are putting, please don't put trash canisters in the street, they don't belong in the street, they need to be on the curb itself. So I just wanted to ask if we can review that again and maybe have some discussions, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any, any more comment?
Yes, we have one more.
Must be Vince.
Is it? No?
Must be Vince.
No?
Vince has his hand out.
Is it? I don't see, yeah, yeah. Vince, can you hear us? Okay, go ahead if you have, unmute yourself, we missed you today, especially Angela.
She even baked you a pie, now it belongs to me.
Councilman Ahmad, Council Chair, you're learning, man, I taught you a lot.
Can't hear you, buddy.
I'm on now. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just want to say, uh, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. City always looking good from what I, from what I've seen. And, uh, excuse me, I hope everybody enjoys your holiday, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you very much, Vince, I hope you're doing well. Uh, any more, Madam Clerk? I see none.
Yes, everybody's favorite, give them a round of applause.
We've got, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Um, we just want to take a minute to remind everybody that, um, on December fifth and sixth, the weekend is gonna be for the Goodfellas collection. And so they'll be out on the corners once again collecting, it's gonna be our ninety-seventh year. We want, uh, no child without a Christmas, and we've had a, an uptick in, in applications for, for aid this year. And so if you have any, uh, any money to spare, please, uh, see our, see our people at the corners and, and, and be generous.
I've got a thousand on it.
Thank you very much, Chief.
We're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, guys, you can see your phones. Council Chair, can I ask a question? Where can, um, we sign up so that we can make sure that Councilman Wanto, Councilwoman Alowski Maxwell, Councilman Musket, Councilman Ahmad, Councilman Saab, Councilwoman Brier, Councilman Conson, myself, uh, Director Mehdi, Director Farhat, Chief of Staff, where we can all be a part of this? Because I want to make sure that everybody volunteers their time, and Saab, don't look at me like that, yes, you are gonna volunteer. Where, where can they sign up?
Yep, just reach out to me, and, and I can find out what, what corners need help, and I can get you guys out on the corners.
Marco, you in? There you go.
Yeah. You missed Director, uh, Director Nancy too, you missed Director Nancy.
Director Nancy.
Who's hiding? It's a new blue shirt.
Yep. Uh, DPW's got a corner already all set, I know who'd be over there at Michigan, where are you at? Michigan Beach, yep.
Thank you very much. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Saab, supported by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, God bless you all, thank you.